With summer staff. Especially first timers.
Yeah, exactly.
Many didn't.
Makes sense.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome here, everyone. It's always much more enjoyable doing this for an audience, so thank you for coming. I'd like to give the opening to Counselor Susan Penner at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The latest report on medical assistance in dying, or MAID, is out. Between 2016 and 2021, over 31,500 Canadians chose to die by MAID. The reason most Canadians chose MAID was not because of physical pain or because death was imminent. It was because of things like losing the ability to engage in meaningful activities and the inability to perform daily activities. Other reasons include feeling like a burden to friends and family and being lonely. As it turns out, it's losing the things that give life meaning that cause people to despair. Suffering mentally, emotionally, and spiritually is often more difficult for people to deal with than physical pain. And with only 30% of Canadians having access to palliative care, proper supports are often unavailable. Our culture increasingly believes that it is better for people to die rather than to face any kind of suffering or possible suffering. Babies are aborted for things as minor as a cleft palate, a club foot, or simply for being inconvenient. People with disabilities, mental illness, or a disease diagnosis are increasingly being told that MAID is a legitimate treatment option even when their death is not foreseeable. MAID removes the ethical and moral responsibility society has to take care of the aging and vulnerable under the pretext of compassion and personal liberty when, in fact, MAID is a deliberate strategy by the government to save on healthcare costs. Further, as the rate and rationale for MAID expand, at what point will the right to die turn into the obligation to die? Will someone be encouraged to die by MAID to free up a hospital bed? Or to donate their organs to someone whose life is deemed more valuable? Sadly, Canada has quickly become the most permissive country in the world for MAID and is set to further reduce restrictions next year. To put into perspective how out of control MAID is in Canada, consider this. The state of California legalized MAID in 2016, the same year as Canada. California and Canada also have approximately the same population, 39 million for California and 38 million for Canada. In 2021, 486 Californians died by MAID compared to 10,064 Canadians. This is a national tragedy. A better way forward is a culture of caring where we walk alongside the aging and vulnerable, support them in their suffering, visit them in their loneliness, and increase access to palliative care. The beauty of a culture of caring is that we can give people hope in the midst of their circumstances. We can help people find meaning and purpose simply by being present, which, according to the government stats, but not their pref- or the government stats, but not their preference, will give people the desire to live, not to die. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penner. Counsel, we have the agenda in front of us, looking for a motion to adopt. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Penner. Any comments?
No comments.
No comments.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Counsel, we have the minutes of August 2, 2022, the regular council meeting. It's on page one. We've all had a chance to review, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Penner. Any comments? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Looking for a motion to excuse Counselor Swagstra. He's missing tonight. This is, this is an anomaly. This doesn't happen. I think he, I think this is tarnishing his perfect attendance in over, I think, over 16 years. So anyways, looking for a motion. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Siemens. Call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. We are just a few minutes before 7:35, so we'll go to number nine, Administration. We'll go to the 9A, Accounts Payable. It's at the back of the book. We've all had a chance to, to, to look them over. Looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Siemens. Any comments?
No comments.
Call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. We have the financial statements ending July 31, 2022. We've all had a chance to review those two. Looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Siemens, or by Penner.
No, no comment.
Call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. We are still just before 7:35, so we'll take the, the July building permits. That's on page 34. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counselor Penner. Go ahead. Any comments?
Yeah, we're having such a strong year. This is always encouraging to see these numbers, especially when you look at residential this month. That had a very good showing. So year-to-date, we're already at over $58 million for total value of permits issued. So things keep rolling in Steinbach. It's really great to see.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's great to see that we're seeing a lot more deck permits as well. There are a lot of people are enjoying our wonderful summer that we've been having this year. And year-to-date, we're looking at 134 new families, total dwelling units added. So 134 families coming and calling Steinbach their home, which is another great thing to be seeing.
Anything further of counsel? Anything closing?
No.
Yes, counsel, we are having a great year. As Counselor Penner remarked, she said we're at just over $58 million in permits. I mean, that, we've had, there've been times we've had whole years that weren't that high. So we're, we are really experiencing great growth in our community. And it's showing that builders are having a lot of confidence in, in our city and, and counsel in our decisions. So call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is Carrie. Okay, we're just a little above, a little bit past 7:35, so we'll go to our public hearing. This is 6A, this is variance, variance V 2022-13. This is referring to number six, Langill Way. At this time, I will close the, the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workantin, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of counsel. Variance file V-2022-13 is being applied for by Gabe Dirksen of Ten Architectural Group. The owner of the property is Agassi Shore Developments, LTD. Purpose of the variance application is to permit 568 parking stalls for proposed residential development, whereas a total of 586 parking stalls are required for the development of the subject property. As I mentioned, the applicant is proposing to build a multifamily development on, on the parcel and wishes to see a slight reduction in the required parking. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file with respect to the, the proposed development at the subject property. While there, this is significant, City Council has set precedent with the previous approval of a multifamily development under file V-2021-15, just last year, which reduced the number of required parking stalls for a multifamily development at Millbrook Market. However, having said that, there is the potential of additional multifamily development nearby the subject parcel as property to the east is currently zoned residential high density. Properties to the north are zoned as residential medium density. However, if counsel is satisfied that the potential impacts of the reduction in parking can be mitigated, recommendation is for counsel to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Workantin. Is the applicant here today? Okay, seeing no applicant, then I will ask if there are any comments, questions, or objections to this file. I will ask again. Are there any comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, seeing none. We will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Can I ask a question to Administration?
Go ahead, yep.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering if you can clarify if the three public streets there, Thresher, Langill, Way, and Blind Creek Boulevard, will have parking on those streets?
Because they are all considered residential streets generally, the city does permit parking on one side of a street.
Yes, Counselor Penner.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do you have a second, or Counselor Penner? Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
Yes, I think this is a reasonable request. 18 spots is not that significant when you're looking at nearly 600 lots. The other thing to consider is, this is unusual in that there'll be streets on three sides of this property actually allowing for a lot more public parking. So hopefully, if there is an issue, that would help mitigate some of the stress, if, if that even, if it would come to that. So I'm comfortable approving this.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also feel it's important to note that of all the suites that are coming in and the parking requirement of one and a half stalls per unit, 14 of the, of the units are micro, 120 of them being one bedroom. So in terms of having 1.5 parking stalls per unit right there, that's going to cut into a lot of, a lot of units that will only be requiring one parking stall as well. It's obviously up to the developer's best interest to make sure that there's enough parking that they feel is adequate so that they're, so that the development is desirable. So I don't think that 18 stalls is an ill intent, and I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to pass it, Eric.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Anything closing?
Nothing further.
Okay. Counsel, I'll just call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is Carrie. Okay, counsel, we will go to number 8A, under Reports and Recommendations of City Manager. This is the Attender Award for the landfill active cell expansion. Mr. Workantin, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of counsel. As part of the city's 2022 capital program, one of the projects that was considered was the expansion of the active cell being used at the city's landfill site. The, the tenders were issued earlier this summer and closed on July 13th. However, only one bid was received. All is in order with, with the bid, and no deficiencies were found in the submission. The recommendation by the project engineer, being Tetra Tech, is to award the tender to Earthmax Construction, Inc. For option one, being the full scope of the work, for $1,807,051.42. And I would like to add that just because of the, the result of the, the tender and the fact that only one bid was received, the city was, or at least Administration was concerned that fair value for money was being provided. So there is a supplemental report that was provided by our project consultant, which reviewed projects of comparable value that have been completed in, in similar communities more recently. That information is provided. Based on that review, it demonstrates that the bid is generally within commonly expected range of fair pricing. And subsequent to the bid being received, the city and its consultant reviewed the scope of the work and identified certain components that were able to be revised. These revisions were determined so that the project design and work completed were more consistent with the standards that are used in the, the active cells that are currently being used and would be consistent for the facility overall. Fortunately, this updated scope change added only approximately $3,000 to, to the actual scope of the work and value. So recommendation overall is that the tender to Earthmax Construction, Inc. be awarded for the amount of $1,809,945.52.
Thank you, Mr. Workantin. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Siemens?
Motion approved.
Do you have a second, or Counselor Hebert? Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
As Administration explained, this is a contract for our, our landfill to expand our active cell. The Steinbach landfill site is a Class 1 landfill site. There's, it's the only one in southeastern Manitoba, and we take a lot of product from other municipalities and, and communities. And so it is, is important. It's also a revenue generator for us, but it is important that we keep our, our Class 1 status and that we continue to be actively pursue building the, the active cells and so on. And we heard that Earthmax Construction was the only and sole bid. We have information that gives us the reasoning and, and the issues around it. And so it's for just over $1.8 million, and those dollars are going to come out of the city's environmental reserve fund.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it is important that we maintain upgrading as time goes on in order to make this landfill site last longer. So I think it's a good, good move for the city, and I would approve as well.
Anything further of counsel? Anything closing?
Just one further thing, Mr. Mayor, that we were expected to reach capacity on that cell at the end of 2023. So it is important for us to get that work done so that we can not have to worry about that for next year.
Okay. That, this is correct. And you know, as we grow, and we're growing so fast, our facilities have to grow too, and even, even our landfill. Because as we grow, more houses, more, more garbage is, is created, and our landfill will be needed to also grow. So I will support this motion. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is Carrie. Okay, counsel, we'll go to 8B. This is variance V 2022-23, referring to 18, Morano Cove. Counsel, we had the public hearing last week, and we brought it, we asked Administration to take the information and the questions and give us a report. That report starts on page 31. And I will just give it to Mr. Workantin now to introduce this report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of counsel. As you mentioned, this report, a copy is provided in your agenda package. There were four questions that were posed by counsel to Administration at the last meeting. And the first of those questions was related to fire insurance and the availability or rating of fire insurance in respect of the neighboring property at 14 Morano Cove, and whether, whether it was impacted by this variance. Based on the review of City Administration, we are not aware of any previous case within the city respecting a property line variance application that impacted the ability of a neighboring property to acquire adequate fire insurance. Administration is also not aware that, of any situation where an approving variance required, or where approving a variance to a required property setback had any impact on the premiums paid for such an insurance policy. Generally, fire insurance required ratings and the building development is the sole responsibility of the subject property. And any remedial changes that may be needed with respect to building codes, et cetera, would be entirely the responsibility of the subject property and property owner. Secondly, the question was related to setbacks at 14 Morano Cove. Although it wasn't relevant to the particular variance application, Administration can confirm that according to the records that it has on file, the house located at the, the neighboring property at 14 Morano Cove appears to be at least four feet from the side yard property line and therefore would comply with the required setbacks for the current zoning. Precedents that have been set that are somewhat related to this file. One was originally identified in the material that was provided to counsel, which was variance file V-2019-02 that counsel approved. This approved a side yard variance of 2 feet 6 inches, where a minimum of four feet were required. This property was located at 30 High Point Lane. Previous precedent approved by counsel was file V-2016-17, located at 50 Poplar Crescent, where City Council approved a variance to permit a side yard of 2 feet 6 inches, where the required side yard setback was 3 feet, and also approve an eve projection of 1 foot 6 inch, where the required eve projection was a minimum of 2 feet. And finally, related to the application information, as noted in the application document by the applicant, the site plan and construction layout provided by the surveyor didn't include the front porch. The as-built has the basement sitting at a 4-foot side yard, as per the site plan. However, the actual building construction built the porch within 2 feet of, of the, the side yard. And that was provided by the applicant as part of the variance application. This app, or this explanation is consistent with the information that, that was provided at the time of the building permit. As a result, with this information and clarification of questions that counsel had, I have provided a number of possible options that counsel may want to, want to consider. However, to be consistent with recommendation that was originally provided by Administration at the meeting of two weeks ago, Administration continues to recommend that counsel approve the requested variance. And if counsel does approve this option, Administration would direct the builder to make any necessary changes that may be required pursuant to building code requirements with respect to the reduced side yard setback.
Thank you, Mr. Workantin. Okay, counsel, you've seen the report. We, we were there at the meeting, the la- last council meeting. How would you like to proceed? Counselor Hebert?
Motion to approve, as requested.
Do we have a second, or Counselor Penner? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, on a level perspective to this situation that we have at number 14 and number 18, Morano, we have, it's on a cul-de-sac, and we have all the houses. If you look at the front of the houses, they're not in a nice circular pattern. We've got number 14 and number 18 are offset. So number 14 is behind number 18. And what I'm talking about offsets, when ordinarily, the front peach of a house, the, the bees would be parallel to each other. In this case, they're not. Number 14 is set back a fair ways. And so, yes, the overhang on number 18 is within 6 inches of the property line. But when you look at, because the houses are offset, there is a much greater space well over 4 feet between the two houses. I'm not excusing that this house was built within 6 inches of the property line. Initially, I made a motion two weeks ago to deny in order to get a discussion going. This did not materialize. Instead, the issue of the variance was tabled by Counselor Dean and Penner till today. Having viewed both houses, and I went there the other day, and I spoke very briefly to the Carkins and the Foxmarts, who are not home, otherwise I would have spoken to them as well. What we have is a changeable opinion on my part that there no longer is a concern for emergency services to go past that side of the house. I don't think that is an issue, and I don't believe that there is an issue with the fire as well. I don't see that an issue is any longer valid. It's unfortunate that the builder did not pay more attention to the survey or the plan drawn. I'm not going to give any excuses for the builder, why he did that, is that an oversight, whatever. I'm not going there. But what I do hope at the end of all this is that the, this is sort of a situation between the builder of number 18 and the owners of number 14. But I hope somehow that that won't be an issue between the neighbor, the two neighbors, one from 14 and 18. So I'm, I'm hoping that that can be resolved. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Penner?
Yeah, I would just like to say that in these situations, there are times when there's the perspective and maybe the reality that it's better or easier to ask for forgiveness than permission, and that builders sometimes intentionally, you know, you know, place their properties that they're building incorrectly because they would like it better, even if it's not approved, hoping that the city will just, you know, approve it after the fact. And that's happened before, and we've given out fines in those situations. In this situation, however, based on the report we've received and, you know, some other information I've gathered, I do believe this is a genuinely honest mistake. The builder is reputable in our community, and it's unfortunate that this happened. But I'm comfortable with approving the motion as it stands. And hopefully, I'm, I'm, I'm sure going forward, they'll be more careful, but sometimes these mistakes happen. And fortunately, they do not happen very often.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Counselor Siemens?
Just echo the comments of Counselor Penner. I agree with the comments you made. I think there was a mistake made by the, by the contractor. There was, and how do you deal with this, right? And, and the house is in place. But I agree with the comments that it was a, a mistake has been made, whether it's the surveyor or the contractor, or how it was read. But I think, too, that we need to approve, approve this variation as it stands, and, and there's a lesson learned here by all the parties.
Anything further? Anything closing?
Nothing further to add.
Well, counsel, variances like these, like after-the-fact variances, variances are always difficult because the, 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 the building is there, and now it's wrong. But in this case, I spent this last two weeks doing a little bit of my own research too. And as I talked to staff, I found out that, that the builder in question has got a great respect by our, by our administration and our staff. They're very easy to work with, has, has, has done a lot of great builds in our community. And when I, when I was explained how the, this could have happened, it, you know what? Really, counsel, it is an honest mistake. The, the builder never set out to do this. Actually, on the first plan, as the, the foundation was being set up, it was set up completely to spec, and, and the builder thought they were doing the right thing. And I, I do believe it was, like we say, an honest mistake. And I do hope too that, that this will, that they will, we'll be able to get past this in the neighborhood, and this will work out well. But at, at this time, I, I do believe that we should approve this and move on. I, I went by the, the properties, and I didn't just stop there at that cul-de-sac. I went and I looked at other cul-de-sacs in our community. And really, there's nothing different in that cul-de-sac than there is in others. These are irregular lots. They're difficult to build on. And in many cases, you try and put the house as close to the front as you can to maximize your backyard and your setbacks, and so that everything will work out. And I believe that that's, that's what happens in, in every cul-de-sac. And, and I think in this case, it was just an honest mistake. And for that reason, I will, I will also, I will vote in favor of this motion. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is Carrie. Okay. Counsel, we'll move on to 9D, Business Licenses, on page 35. Looking for a motion to approve.
Do that.
Counselor Siemens, second by Counselor Hebert. Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
Nothing further. It's great to see that businesses are taking out business licenses.
Anything further?
I agree. Thank you.
I'm just going to call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. We got number nine. This is the Manitoba Hydro Street Lighting. Looks like we're getting more streetlights on, on Park Road. Looks like there'll be seven for a total of 826.56 for the year, and eight for a total of 14, 12, 16 for the year. Looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Siemens. Any comments?
Nothing to add.
Call for the question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. Okay, we got 9F. This is the Disaster Financial Assistant Resolution. We're looking for, Mr. Workantin, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of counsel. In the spring of this year, Uh, in the spring of this year, uh, due to, uh, spring thaw, rains, et cetera, and, uh, unique weather conditions, there was, uh, significant overland flooding experienced in many different parts of Manitoba. Uh, that prompted the province to declare, uh, a, uh, an event that is eligible for disaster financial assistance, uh, funding, uh, where, uh, property owners have experienced a loss, uh, due to flooding, uh, that isn't normally covered by insurance. Uh, this was fairly general across Manitoba, uh, and for the most part, uh, City Administration wasn't aware that there was any significant damage, uh, that occurred within Steinbach, uh, until more recently. Uh, and as a result, uh, and in order for homeowners affected within Steinbach, uh, to be able to apply for, uh, disaster financial assistance, uh, City Council must pass a resolution. Uh, the city must, uh, file, uh, an application or, uh, complete the required documents with Manitoba Emergency Measures Office, uh, in order for, uh, the program to be activated. Uh, these homeowners and, uh, property owners then in turn can apply for assistance, uh, directly to, uh, to the Disaster Financial Assistance Office. So recommendation, uh, that Council, uh, consider and pass the resolution that is provided on page forty.
Thank you. All right, yes, Council.
Can I just ask a question?
Yep.
Um, what about private insurance? I'm just out of curiosity.
Well, this, the program is intended to cover losses that aren't, uh, otherwise covered by private insurance. For, for example, overland flooding. Uh, if there's, uh, water, for example, that would have come in through basement windows, normally, uh, homeowner's insurance won't cover that.
Okay.
Question to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Council.
Administration, through you. Uh, I see the maximum, uh, level contribution of eighty-four thousand dollars. Uh, how many, uh, how many applications do you know we have that they're going to divide eighty-four thousand dollars?
Um, I...
Uh, excuse me, I think, uh, Council Hebert's on the next, he's on the, uh, the Minister of Intro Government Affairs letter.
My, my apologies.
Uh, but just to, uh, partly answer your question, I'm aware of anywhere from five to ten potential claims within Steinbach. So it's not significant.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Council.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved, moved this resolution.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Penner. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, uh, this is a great, great thing to see, as, uh, Mr. Workington indicated, uh, by no, no means any fault of Administration, uh, but that there was advocates within the community that, that saw that they needed to, uh, acknowledge and inform Administration of the damages that did occur. Um, so it's great that there was advocates amongst the community to bring this, uh, this, this, uh, situation to Administration's attention, and then also for Administration following up and going through with the disaster, uh, uh, Manitoba emergency disasters... Sorry. Disaster Financial Assistance Program. So on all parties, I, I say thank you and good job.
Anything further?
Nothing further.
Anything further, Council?
Nothing further.
Call for the question. All's in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Council, are there any questions of Council? Seeing none. We'll go to number eleven A. This is, uh, Correspondence and Petitions. This is, uh, the letter from the Minister of Intro Government Affairs, Infrastructure and Communities, from the Honorable Dominic LeBlanc. Just, uh, how would you like to proceed? Take his information at this time?
Say thank you.
There is no other business. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Council Penner, seconded by Council Hebert. Call for the question. All's in favor. That is carried. Next regular council meeting is Tuesday, September sixth, at, uh, at seven thirty.